All right. Well, thank you for coming to this meeting. And we are going to try to be super respectful of your time. In fact, I'm going to put a timer on my phone right now. We did finish worship early today, just so we're ahead of, ahead of time already. But I know we have things to get to and. But let me speak for a few minutes here and the format will be I'll speak for a few minutes and then I'm going to have our Elder Keith distribute some, some papers so you can guys see what some of our plans are. And then we will, I'll speak again for a few more minutes and then we will open it up to any questions for the last 10 minutes or so. So where, why are we having this? Where, where is this coming from? So many of you know, some of you may not know, I had some, some health struggles last year and was away for five weeks on a leave of absence. And that was really in the early part of the year. And then last year I came back and the Lord has just kind of been steadily increasing my energy and my enthusiasm and, and my health and all kinds of things. And about eight months ago, I wrote a letter to our elders, our session, just describing some of my desire for more fruitfulness and vitality at Ascension Church. And what the Lord may be calling us to is we planted this church, really replanted it eight years ago. And there's a whole long story of different places we've been in. And then we bought this building in the middle of COVID. And, and the Lord has just blessed us since then. But there's been peaks and valleys in our story, just like with any story of a church. And, and yet, you know, it's my desire that we continue to be intentional about how we are grounding this church for the long haul, for a vital church presence here in this neighborhood for ongoing. And, you know, just a little bit of context, I've actually been traveling a lot for work this year. I've been to three different conferences, so to speak. Back in, in February, I joined 50 other pastors in Boca Raton, Florida with PCA pastors, mostly, that's our denomination. And, and really the prayer and the heartbeat of that gathering was to return back to what I quoted today in the, in the sermon, the Great Commission, Jesus's call to us to go and make disciples of all nations. And there was just a spirit of fervor in, in the room there in Florida to just for us all to go out and to bring this to our churches. And, and then just a few weeks ago, I was in New York City at something called The Resound Project, again, about 50 other pastors, mostly Presbyterians and Anglicans. And we were gathering to talk about vitality and the church. And the church has taken a big beating in the last number of years. It's been what some have called a great de-churching, people leaving the church. Some people leave with, with, leave loudly. Others have, have kind of quietly disappeared. And there's lots of research right now about the, the vitality of the church and what is needed for this moment. And so I spent a number of days praying with those pastors and brought that energy back here. Just this last week, I was in Chattanooga, Tennessee at our General Assembly. That's the largest gathering of our elders in our denomination. So we have elders here at a church that's called a session. And then there's elders at a Presbyterian, and then there's elders at a General Assembly. And our meetings were this week. And about, I would say about a fourth to a third of the seminars that were offered this week were about evangelism, mission, outreach, and a desire for us to, to turn our, our hearts that way. And there's just a lot of good energy right now. Our, our church, and when I say church, I mean our denominational church, our PCA church, is one of the few churches that is growing at this time. It's grown 1.84% last year. So we'll take it, right? It's slow and steady growth. But, but most of the mainline denominations are declining. And one of the most exciting things about that, that growth that we've had is the highest uptick in our growth has been in adult conversions to the faith. So people coming to faith as adults. And so we're known for baptizing our children, which is something we gladly and gladly do and rejoice to do. But we also baptize adults who come to faith in Jesus. And that is exciting as well. So all this has been kind of feeding into this desire for us to really look outward at this moment and to, to think about what God may be calling us to in the next chapter here at Ascension. I've also been really focused on Romans, Chapter 15, in which Paul talks about his own ministry. And I've been just really meditating on this passage. I'm not going to read it to you now, or I'll preach again. I don't want to do that. But he basically says in Romans 15, "I am proud of my work for God." And then he says, from Illyrica, he draws this big circle around all the areas that he's gone and he says, "I, I've come to proclaim Christ where Christ has not been proclaimed before." And he says this remarkable statement, "I have fulfilled the ministry of the gospel of Jesus Christ." He drew a big circle and he said, "I, I did it. I fulfilled it. God helped me. God did it." And, and, and that spirit of, of just saying, "This is my ministry and I'm proud of it and I want to see more and I've accomplished what I wanted to do," has fed into my energy as well to desire that for our church, because I am proud of this church. I am proud of our work for God. I'm proud of our leaders. I'm proud of the, the worship ministry we have. I think we have a unique thing here to offer this neighborhood and this church, this city. But I also wouldn't say with Paul that we have fulfilled our ministry. I think there's a lot here. God called us to this building. This building is underutilized in some ways. We have a big field. We have a big parking lot. And there's other things that we can do with this and more people to bring to faith in this neighborhood and beyond. And so this is all kind of going into, what I want to share with you is three convictions that the elders have been talking about and three words. And I'm just going to run through them very briefly. And then from that, there are three goals that we have, three convictions and three goals. The first conviction is this hospitality. I'm going to talk for a minute just, just about seemingly random things and then I'm going to bring it back to what we want to do about it in just a minute here. But number one is hospitality. This church was founded in hospitality. This church was founded in Rob Witham's kitchen and living room. This, this church was founded eating and drinking every single week together. It's so harder to do as we've, as we've grown in size, but that's really what our heart has always been. In fact, the way that we put it in our mission, our, our values, actually, a core value of this church is we make room at the table. We make room at the table. Now, that describes our hospitality-based evangelism. What do I mean by that? Think of the moment where you've invited some people over and it's more people than you're used to having in your house. And so you need more chairs around your table. And what do you do? You make room at that table. You, everybody scoots in a little closer. You grab the computer chair from the other room, right? You have mismatching chairs all over the place and you make room at the one table. And it's a beautiful moment when people are sitting around a table. It's almost a little too small for them. And that was the picture that we had when we said, "We make room at the table," meaning we want to invite whoever wants to come into this church. We, we recognize that we have a unique way of worship. We do things that will be off-putting to some people, but we want all who would want to come in to, to enjoy being here. Currently, we don't have a lot of space on Sundays especially. Sometimes in our worship service, I know it's summer right now, so it's a little bit hard to picture it, but come, when our GCU students come back and all this stuff, this is going to be a crowded room in here. But even when it's not crowded, we have a lobby that is impossible to talk in, right? Because it's so loud and so crowded and there's not a lot of space to hang out outside. And our parking lot is of course full and we encourage people to park on the field. So that's, we're need to make room at the table. Conviction one, hospitality. Conviction two, stewardship. All right, God gave us this building very quickly. I'll remind you that I used to pull into the parking lot of this church and pray for this specific building. And we were in a place, we were at two services at Hope Women's Center. And we thought that we would be an impossible ask. We hardly had any money and we wanted a place to be and we wanted to rent this facility that we're sitting in right now. And we pulled into, I pulled into the parking lot, prayed for this six, seven, eight times. Finally got a phone number that I could call and ask, thus commencing a 10-month-long process of me communicating with Valley Bible Church, the owners of this building. Then basically for a year, we rented from them. It was a long process to care for them and to show grace to them. They still meet, by the way, a handful of them in the room here to the side, on the side hallway on Sunday mornings. You might have seen some of their signs as you pulled in, Valley Bible Church. That's, that's who owned this building. Over time, we developed a relationship with them and then asked if we could talk about ownership transfer of the building. And then another long timeline of us having these conversations and considering all these things. And God opened the doors, this amazing story. And they ended up asking us for $10,000 down. And they financed the building to us so that we didn't have to involve any banks on this property. So we paid them every month, but we own the building. And it's just an amazing story of God's provision for us. So this is ours to take care of. I'll tell you, stewardship has been on the elders' minds because we're really kind of doing the bare minimum to take care of this building. We really have, only have the budget to do the bare minimum to take care of this building. There are portions of this building that are still unsafe. And, and really for the last couple of years, as you guys have known who've been with us, we've always finished in the black financially, which has been a great blessing. And I thank you for your tithes and offerings that you give towards that. But for most of the year, for the last two years, we've been in the red throughout the year. So we haven't been able to invest in, in making sure that this property is updated, safe. And so there's a lot of things that are kind of lingering around and make us a little nervous. We are recognizing that while increase in giving is always a wonderful thing, an amazing thing, and you guys have risen to that, just continuing to ask that is also part of the answer to the problem, but it's not the answer. We also need new givers to this, to this building so that we can have, we can steward it well. The second matter of stewardship relates to the safety of our children. And I mean this both inside the building and also outside. Inside the building, we have a number of classrooms that are too full right now. The ratio of parents to kids is, is not great right now. A couple of the classrooms in particular, amazing problem to have. Also the safety of our children outside of the building, as most of us see at least one parent every week running and grabbing a toddler that's heading towards Osborne Road or heading to the canal over here. And so we recognize there's some safety concerns of just having kids outside, which is where most of us have to hang out because the lobby's not big enough. So these, these are, I know I'm throwing spaghetti on the wall. It's all going to stick here in just a minute. Third conviction, fruitfulness. Fruitfulness, this is the spirit of what I was talking about, a return to mission and growth here at Ascension. The Church of Jesus Christ, and if you're on staff here, you know that I, I talk about this all the time. The church is a home and the church is a mission. It is both. It is a home and it is a mission. It is a home. It is a place to be discipled. It is a place for Christians. Some people don't say that. Say like, some, some traditions say, "Hey, the church is about bringing unbelievers in." Not fully. The church is a home for the Christian. We disciple people here. We grow in the faith. We grow in the grace and knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ. It's a place for the Bible to be studied. It's a place for God to be worshipped decently and in good order. This is a place for Christians. It's a home. Though the church is also a mission, it is, we're called to be ambassadors of Christ. We're called to always be ready to give in a, a defense of our faith. We're called to walk in wisdom towards outsiders. That's what Colossians tells us. And the truth is, these two things exist together. It's not like the church is either a home or a mission, or it's more of one or the other. They both are in tension with one another. The mission of the church exists to create a home. That's what we're trying to do, make room at the table. We're trying to bring people into our home. But the home also exists to create missionaries. They're both are, are true. And what happens with churches over time is that we tend more towards the home side than the mission side. And it's the job of leadership, I think, in part, to talk to us and to remind us that God has called us to be ambassadors, not just in our own individual lives, but with our witness here at the neighborhood that we're in, to the place we're called. We've always said we want it to matter that we are here to this neighborhood. We do think that we've done a number of things to be a blessing to this neighborhood. We do have a good reputation with the neighborhood, that there's always a desire for more. So those are the convictions. I'm going to queue up Keith here to hand out our pages here and share with one another color printing. I was being frugal. All right, one, one per couple, per family, a couple per family is fine. Basically, all three of these convictions lead us to now present to you, and we're not really voting on anything today, but we want you to see our heart for three goals that we believe will address many of the convictions that we have. The first goal, you'll see this, I know not everybody has a page yet, but we'll just dive one in for the sake of time. The first goal is adding a second service in the fall. And again, in the spirit of we make room at the table. It will alleviate many of the problems in our kids' classroom, our lobby issues, our parking issues. And this has been our practice in the past. If you know, if you, we have had a second service in the past and we desire to move back towards that again. We almost always are at one service in the summer, but for, we've actually been a long time, longer time than normal. You'll maybe return back. We have been at, at one service. And our desire is to move towards a second service. You see here, sanctuary capacity is about 190, 200 if we squeeze. And you can see the numbers here of what we're, we are as a church. And so it is our desire to add this second service as a way to address these issues. Hospitality, making room at the table. Stewardship, the allowance of more people to come so that we can more intentionally care for our kids and the kids' classrooms so that we have more giving, tithes and offerings so we can steward this building better. We don't believe that we are able to do that based on, on history with our, with our current So that's the first goal. And our goal is September 21st to start the second service. The times are, are listed there. I'm just going to run through these real quick and then we'll open it up for, for questions. I know that you probably have questions. The second goal is to launch Phase Four of what we call the Able Project. This is our, our capital campaign, our financing for this building. And, and this next phase, I'll just include, I'll just read this to you here, to include a safety fence for the children addressing the front here. We have a, a nice fence idea picked out that's a low fence that will provide a little bit of safety and care for the children. More of a welcoming entrance. The whole theme of this phase of our, of the Able Project is welcome in. And, and so a hangout area outside, especially in the cooler seasons, to have a place to be, to replace the basketball hoop that we had to take down for community use. Landscaping in the front, updated and more functional kitchen if funded, and potentially a playground as well here in the front. And so if you turn over on the back of the page, you'll see this is Phase Four. Our desire is to enter into this phase. You'll see the history there. So if you remember, when we first bought the building, we had a DIY Phase One, where we basically didn't have hardly any money whatsoever. And so we all got out the elbow grease and we painted and we cleaned and we scraped gum and we did all kinds of stuff together. A beautiful time. We raised about $30,000 to be able to provide the materials for that. In Phase Two, we basically raised some money. We were also gifted $50,000 from our mother church, New Valley Church. And we took out also a, a zero interest loan from our denomination of $100,000 to take on Phase Two, which was the essentials. We literally had rain leaking in and falling on our sound equipment in the back. There was a hole in the roof and we needed a new roof. And so we put the entire new roof on. We put new air conditioning throughout the building. Phase Three, we called our Home Phase. And, and we basically then moved into a season where we focused on what we were using. So this room, we updated. It looked a lot different at one point. There was a mural up there. There was all kinds of stuff. We, we have the receipts. We'll show you the pictures. This room looked very different and we updated it. And, and we also updated all the classrooms and the bathrooms and those types of things. Again, with a, a bare, like a bare mentality, like we, we had, we didn't, we didn't go over the top, but we also wanted to make it functional, clean and safe for our use. The church is a home, right? And, and now in Phase Four, what we're anticipating and hoping is that we would enter into a phase where we say, "Welcome in," where we really focus on those aspects that are for the guests. Parking, entering in, hanging out, and et cetera. Playground, place for kids to be, safety for guests. We do have those concerns. Sometimes people come here and they're like, "What are the processes here? How do we make sure that everybody's safe?" And we'd love to just be able to alleviate those things for, for others. We've done some scratch work. It's more than scratch work, really. We've really kind of booked this out. Rob Witham, who just prayed for this time together, he is also our contractor. That's his business. And he has done each of these phases with us. And so we have bid, a bid from him on, and, and by the way, he charges very low cost to do that. This is not a profitable thing for him. This is a giving thing for him, by the way. We have also some, some quotes on a playground. And, and so you can see those lined up for you there. It is our desire to raise $128,000 to be able to do these things in, in the order that you see listed there. You can see we have some money in the bank. We have $46,000 already there, which is why we have started on some of the front stuff. You probably saw the bricks and the dirt out front as you came in today, because that's, that's going to be a planter box region. Part of our, part of the desire is to create a welcoming entrance there that will include a pathway down that, that front area and also plants to soften up the front of, of the building. So we have started on that work. As is the case with each of these phases, we have committed to only doing what God brings in. We had a different plan. I'll just remind you briefly. We had a different plan. I was going to ask, I was going to raise, seek to raise 1.1, 1.2 million dollars for this building when we bought it, so that we could do everything at once. That was my plan. We had plans written out. We had drawings, drawings done, all kinds of things. And then COVID. And we recognized that God had a different pathway for us. We said, "Instead of doing this all at once, what would it look like for us to walk in faith for one season, then walk in faith for the next season and the next season?" And that's why we have these different phases, is because we've always committed to saying, "If the money's there, we're going to do it. If it's not there, we're not going to do it." And that, so this is a prayed-for outcome. We're not here to twist any arms or to make it happen. We're here to suggest what the Lord may be doing and what's kind of been on our hearts and the work that we have done. So we'll include new landscaping and entrance area. If you haven't noticed, it's pretty bad out there. Scrubby bushes, dirt, weird odd angles, lots of things to fall on and hurt yourself on. The concrete is old. It's broken up. It's really the worst part of the experience and it's the first part that people see. So it's pretty bad out there. It's okay. We, we, the whole, this whole thing can be likened to renovating a home, right? When you renovate a home and you move into a home, you do the DIY stuff, then you take care of the components, the AC and the, the roof. And then, you know, you make it more of a suitable home and then you invite people in and say, "Welcome to my home." That's the spirit here. I stopped myself here, so I've got four minutes left. That's our desire to do that. New front area, a low fenced area out to the side, potentially a playground. If you could queue up those images, just to show you what we've, we're working on a small playground on the side yard here. So if you, if you see the, there is a yard that's fenced in on the side here. And this would be in that yard. And we would create a bigger open gateway that could then be opened up wide so that the playground could be accessible at certain times and also be closed off at other times. And then it would lead out into a fenced area beyond that fence, another lower fence that would then be more of an open area for kids to play, but they wouldn't be running for Osborne Road. Lastly, if funded, we'd like to add a renovated kitchen. The other part of the building, if you ever go into there, it's pretty bad in our kitchen. Everything's really old. There's two ovens in, in there. Neither one of them work, you know? And we, it's been fine. It's been great. But it's like, what, what could we, when you have a, a great kitchen, then, then you can do more hospitality, right? This has been the whole desire that we have. The last goal would be that we open ourselves up to more invitations, more evangelism, more outward look towards the neighborhood. And this would include strengthening our current ministries for increased capacity, an invitation campaign to invite the neighborhood to Ascension. We've thought about even doing door hangers again or something like that, as we did at the very beginning. Welcome people back in into a new, a new time in our church, setting up the church so that it's able to receive visitors in those ways by having the two services and by spreading things out and having more of a functional and safe environment. And then also to include some kind of training or resources for mission evangelism. Many of you have asked me about this. Many of you have wonder, you have wonderings about this. What is it, what is God calling me to do? And I want us to have a conversation about that as a church. This part's not built out yet because as I've been stewing all these resources, I've been a part of this year and these conferences I've been a part of, there is just something in the air about our moment. And I don't want, everybody always says that for their moment. I'm not trying to overextend that. But there has been a lot of research done recently on people's willingness to come back to church. There's kind of a different moment even than it was 10 years ago, five years ago. The, the antithetical treatment of the church has, has been on decline the last few years. People expressing more openness. COVID in many ways opened up many people to the need for community, the need for the transcendent. And so we want to be faithful to God's great commission to us. And what does that look like? It doesn't mean that we change our worship service and we do all this stuff to like make, be more attractive. We don't have that view. We have the view of creating an amazing home and then just inviting people to it. That's the hope. That's the desire. I'm going to stop there because I just threw a lot of spaghetti. So you all are just looking at me and I don't even know what you're thinking. So tell me what you're thinking and we'll open it up for a few minutes for questions. And if I need to call on Rob, if you have a specific question about the Able Project or about funding or about what projects are in view, then Rob can answer those as well. The online give? Well, we have, we have on, thank you for the question, bud. We have a drop-down menu online that says Able Project. So the Able Project is what we do. By the way, the reason for that name is because when we walked in here, right above, this used to not be open. This used to be closed in right here. And there was a sign here that said, "God is able." And that was the church's statement that had founded this church. And that statement was over all of their plant, their documents. We found upstairs in the attic up here, which nobody should go up in because it's one of those areas that's not safe. But we found the, the original plans and they were stamped with "God is able." So as a way to honor them and to carry on the tradition of what has happened here for the last 80 years at 18th Street in Osborne, we named this the Able Project. That's the heart behind it. The Able Project is a drop-down menu. We have not yet decided on a day when we're going to ask for commitments or to ask for gifts. We have not, we don't have a strict timeline yet on some of these things. It's towards the fall. This is our first conversation with you. But we want to put it on your heart and on your mind to be praying for, so that when we have those days where we commit, we can all give together or make commitments at that time. So, but online, you can give any time to the Able Project as the Lord leads. And it will help us because we have started some of these projects, as I've already said. We will go up to the 46,000 that's in there, already designated, already given. We will do the first phase of this as we can. We would just like to do more, especially for the safety of the kids, enjoyment of the kids and, and the be able, the ability to serve. Yes, there is, there is a little bit of floor. Rob, can you speak to that about the ability to do that? If you can't hear what he's saying, he's saying it's not structurally sound up there to hold people. We would have to do something, a major renovation to get that where we felt safe, putting pews up on top. Those stairs that are in the back do not lead up to that area. They do lead up to the area behind that. But to get up to that area, you have to have, there's a drop-down staircase in the, in this. So, that's not a viable area until and unless we would build structural supports and a staircase that would not be a drop-down attic-style staircase to get up there. So, I mean, you should be, you should be willing to do that for worship, but, you know, to worship God, to get in. After all, somebody was lowered through a roof once to be healed by Jesus. But we're not going to ask that of you, at least at this point. Yeah, Christine. Might even be what? Yeah. Yes. Yes. That's part of the unformed territory, but the commitment, the goal, is to have those conversations. So what you're describing is the church serves in word and in deed, right? And so you're saying the evangelism side covers the word, but what about the deed? What about being the church to serve others? And what I want us to do is, as part of this whole desire of opening ourselves up, is to have those conversations. What would be those things? We've had a lot of relationship with Hope Women's Center. By the way, they stopped in a couple of weeks ago and said, "This church has been such a blessing to us, and we are so thankful for it." They gave a gift to the church. And so the relationship is still very strong there. There's, I know we don't talk about it upfront as much, but still a lot of ministry happening there. But yes, we're going to have that. We want to be a home and a mission in lots of different ways. I think that would be part of our desire, is to say, "Well, what would be, what would be the things that we could do to better serve the neighborhood, to serve those around us?" But I think what I'm saying is about the evangelism, we don't talk about that a lot either. What I'm bringing up is, there's a moment here where many have noticed that there actually is a window of opportunity here to invite people to church that used to be the not evangelistic thing to do. Like, "Oh, don't invite them to church, just serve." In a sense, there is actually a hunger for people, like, needing the church again. Just happens to be in this moment. That's why I'm talking about that, but it's not to the exclusion of other, of deed ministries. But that's, I would love to have that conversation. Yeah, Davo. So, the fall is, so we would love to get this all done while the weather's good, so that we can enjoy it, right? So that we can have a moment where we invite people in. I hate putting strict timelines on this first conversation. I think it depends on if the, when it comes to the ABLE Project, if the money is there, we're going to, we're going to dive feet-first in. If it's not, we're going to wait and build it to that point. When it comes to the other things, adding the second service, we have committed to that, right? We're going to, September 21st, we're going to try that. Again, this is for now. We always say "for now" here. We're not saying that it's going to be that way forever, or that it's going to be that way for summers or anything else. We just feel like the Lord's leading us to try it again, to move back into that space. We also want to really create a strong hospitality time between the services, so that there's just a lot of space for people to come early or stay late, so that you can see everyone. You know that sometimes it can be kind of a bummer to have that told you, that there's two services. The truth is, most of us connect only with a few people on Sundays anyway. But we, and we all have to be intentional throughout the week to care for one another. But that's, so that's kind of set, Davo, to answer your question. And then this fall, I would love to do some kind of intentional outreach to the neighborhood, and what that looks like exactly. I have several ideas. I'm not going to speak to them right now, because I haven't talked to the elders about it, or we haven't really decided for sure. But this fall, we want there to be a big push. How much gets built this fall? I hope it's a significant portion, but it may not be, depending on what the Lord provides. But yeah, if we have the funding in place, we're going to dive right on in and hope for it to get the longest stretch we can before it gets hot again next year, so that we can enjoy all the outside space. Because really, the heart of this is now we can get out of that lobby and get more people hanging out outside, and the kids feeling safe, and we can be with one another longer and feel better about it. So, as soon as possible. But at a pace that the Lord invites, not, you know, not overly rushed. Yeah. What's the plan with the apartment? Say again? Yeah. We had, we talked, so let me just say, I will use you to talk about a couple of things, but I'm going to get to your question, too. We talked about putting the playground over here, too. Some people will say, "Well, why not? There's a big green space over here," right? But the truth is, access to the inside is really hard. So, you park over here, you go play over there. It takes a long time, you have to go around the whole building or go to the canal and come up. And so, we just felt like, everybody naturally is already going to that green space over there. Let's expand that. There is an apartment building on the side of the church, is what he's talking about. Many people don't even know that. Our, one pastoral intern lives there right now. So, and so, what's going to happen with that? It'll still continue to be, the access point for that is actually on the other side or on the long side. So it'll be basically like, the playground is in the front yard or the backyard, depending on how you look at it. But there, there's very limited things we can do with that. We can't rent that out profitably, like, because that will challenge our 501(c)(3) status. As a church, we only can use it for ministry purposes. So we don't rent that out for money. We, we can use it for things like this, like, as needs arise. But we don't necessarily anticipate needing to have that totally separate space for someone to live in all the time, just whoever is living there, to be knowledgeable that they're going to have a playground, you know, out the front window. But it doesn't really even look like an apartment. It just kind of looks like an extension of the church. So it's, I think it's just going to kind of blend in. That's my, my view. So. Yeah, Amy. First thought is what? Yes. Yeah. Yep, thank you. That's good. We're having these conversations. Two salts is enough, Amy. Just, just deal with it. I'm just kidding. No. So, part of the answer to that is two services, right? So that the people are spread out, still the same bathrooms, but fewer people are using them at one time. You're right, there is a bottleneck there. Those hallways are narrow, they're hard to get up and down to the bathrooms. So for, for that reason, we have to kind of go up before we go out. I think more and better bathrooms would be ABLE Project Phase 5, whatever that is. We can't add a bathroom right now without triggering, my understanding, Rob can correct me, it will trigger our, we're grandfathered in on a lot of things on this property. Can you speak to that, Rob? So yet, the desire is there to do that, but just we don't have the ability to. This would be a lot more than 128,000 if we were bringing that proposal to you. So we're, I do think that will be part of the future, though. I, I hope, you know, that God would bless us to be able to say, "Well, now what can we do to expand from there, because we have now these problems?" If we have two full services, it doesn't matter. Even the overflow in between those bathrooms are going to be very, it's going to be hard, right? So. You're saying other, other under-roof solutions? Yeah, potentially. But as Rob said, the electrical is kind of the problem. We're almost maxed out electrical right now. So we have to replace, we have to rewire the building. If we add anything more, I actually don't even know if we can, I mean, can we put the stoves and stuff functionally in the kitchen? And is that going to be okay? But. Okay. Even under roof? Okay. But she's saying potentially taking out some closets or something like that? Yeah. If you have a suggestion, Amy, I'd love to talk about that afterwards. No, seriously, because we have, we need creativity, right? It's, it's a very efficient 11,000 square feet that we got here. It's very kind of tightly put. So the flow is very good, in a sense, but it's also very small. So it's kind of, you have to work with what you have. But if anybody has suggestions, under roof right now for rearranging things, we're open to that. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you. How do we anticipate the need for volunteers growing with two services? So, there will be, when you add two services, there will be things that get easier and things that get harder. And it's not always obvious what those things are. Of course, it's harder on our staff in some ways, harder on me to preach two services, harder on our, our media team to be here for two services, that kind of thing. If you're talking about our greatest need, volunteers, which is kids ministry, always. If anybody wants to join the kids ministry, you know, please sign up today. No, it actually gets easier with two services. Fewer volunteers needed, because we switched the model to people serving longer terms, and then being able to go to church, because there's two services. So you serve one service, you, you attend one service. And so the problem with kids ministry at one service is that if you're in twice a month, you're out of church half the time. But if you have a model where it's more of a Sunday school model, where people are serving as like, "I'm teaching this class, and I serve one service and I attend the other service," then you actually can ask for longer commitments from people, because it's not taking them out of worship every week. So that, we actually anticipate that getting easier. But other things will get harder. And for each team, we'll have to kind of have that conversation. Yeah. Church, what? Yeah. Yeah. If the Lord calls us to grow, and He calls us to be here long-term, church planting will be necessity, right? If both of those things are true, because this has a limit. This footprint has a limit, for sure. In my experience, and I work with a lot of church planters on our, the committee for our, in our Presbyterian on church planting, and I've been in those worlds for about 20 years. My experience is churches do best when they focus on fruitfulness for themselves and are always also cultivating the idea of planting, both happen at the same time. The idea sometimes is, "Well, if you reach 300, our, our goal is 250, then we'll send out 50 people, and then they will plant a church, and then we'll reach 300, and then we'll send out 50 people." That's a nice theory. It doesn't actually usually work in practice like that, like exactly how you plan. And so, but what does happen, though, is if churches are open and desirous of church planting, then, then people start coming to them for that reason. And so, we develop planters. I'm working with, with our Presbyterian, also with Phoenix Seminary some, too, and potentially doing some things with them. We want more planters. This is a universal problem, and those three gatherings that I went to, every single one of them talked about the need for ministers and church planters, because our numbers are down in terms of church planting. We still are planting, like I said, more churches than many other denominations, but it's still down from what it was in the 80s and 90s. And so the desire is there for that. So rather than planning exactly when we would do that, what I want to do is always be developing men for planting, and always be also focusing on fruitfulness at this congregation at the same time. And then when the Lord brings the person, because really, the bottleneck is the person. Who is the plant? Right now, we don't have gifted people to plant churches. And so that's the bottleneck. If the, if that bottleneck gets undone, then we'll find money, and we'll find people to join them from our, from our ranks. Does that make sense? Two minutes left. So is there another quick question or two questions? Yeah. Yeah. We have a very bottom-up denomination, not top-down. So there isn't a lot of funds in certain areas. But there, there are individual groups that support PCA churches. That's the one, that's the $5 million fund, it's called, is what we got $100,000 for to put the roof on. We're still paying that every month. It's zero interest. It's $800 a month. And I, you know, I think we had a few years left on, like, seven or eight years left on that. But that's the only one that I know of that's connected to the PCA, and we've already tapped into that one. So, if, by the way, the Lord provides in excess of what we need for this, we have talked about either potentially, you know, that can stay, those funds can stay in there for Phase 5, whatever that would be in the future, or we could potentially pay down debt as well. So those are both on the table. Yeah, Anne. Will children's ministry only be during the first service? What we can offer in terms of kids ministry will be a function of what great teachers we can recruit for that. So, the desire would be to start out with both services at max capacity, four classrooms for each service, you know, each of the, or maybe even five classrooms, because we're not, we're now thinking about splitting to the ages. But barring that, we will then, we'll start with that ideal, and then we'll see what the Lord provides. And then we are planning on polling the parents for which service they intend to go to, or if they're flexible, and then trying to direct that a little bit more, so that it's more spread out. Heather is a great person to talk to about that, too. Heather, our new children's ministry director, has done an amazing job. All right. I'm going to invite Guy up to the front to pray for us. And I will stick around. If you guys have questions that you didn't want to ask publicly, I'd be happy to do my best.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for the, the vision that you gave those who planted this church to come and plant this church. We thank you for the faithfulness of those who have become a part of that church plant as it grew into a particular church. We thank you for providing this building for us, and we pray that you might help us to always be good stewards of what you provided to us. May we take care of it. May we use it for your glory, and we use it in a way that is inviting to the neighborhood and is protective of. and is protective of those that are using it. Father, we have lots of issues that are out there that we're wondering, how will this be done? Or where will the volunteers come from? Or where will the money come from for Phase 4 of ABLE? We know that you know the answers to these things. Give us faith to believe. Give us faithfulness to take action, and we will praise you for what will come from this, that it might redound to your honor and your glory. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, and thank you all. I'll be up here if you have any questions. God bless you. Have a good week.